Welcome, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:15 PM. This is the July 12, 2023, meeting of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals. It is being held via Zoom webinar. Analysts and attendees are advised that their image, voice, and telephone number may be recorded for the record. Let me introduce the members of the board. As I call your name, please raise your hand and say present. Jim Royer.
Present.
Danny Batlett.
Present.
Pat Jackson.
Present.
Jenny Zakatinsky.
Present.
Susanna Roberts.
Present.
Kate Suzie.
Present.
The Administrative Assistant for Inspection and Land Use Boards, Leanne Leahy.
Present.
And Amy Quessel, Counsel for the Board. You're here, huh, Amy?
I'm here, Lynn. Hi.
Okay. And I'm Lynn Ryan. Okay, first on the agenda is...
A continued hearing for Ten Bigelow.
Okay, I'll call the hearing to order. Do we have in the audience anyone representing the petitioner?
We do. Would you like me to promote them?
Would you please? Okay, who's gonna speak for the petitioner? And do you have anything you'd like to present to us at this time?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Wayne Bellick, Land Design Collaborative. I'm joined by Kathy Adams, the applicant in representing Kane Industrial Trust. Also joining us tonight is Legal Counsel, Mark Brawski. When we last met with the Board, we discussed, as you recall, the parking. And we seemed to make some good strides at that point. And the last thing on the docket that we understood that the Board needed was the letter from Conservation, which we reached out to them for and has been received by your Board within the last week or so.
Yes, we've received the letter from Carolyn.
Okay. So at this point, Madam Chair, I think we presented everything that you're looking to present, unless you folks have any other questions. We think we're there.
Is there any member of the Board that has questions of the petitioner? Anything that they'd like to see as conditions? Leanne, do we have any other town officers on?
We have the building commissioner, Richard Hanks, and Select Board Chair Christine Keith.
Okay. The Fire Chief is not on, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I have a few things, and then I'll ask Amy if she has anything. Trash removal, you're gonna have a commercial hall and not using the Berlin transfer station, correct?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay, there will be only two tenants, and both will be R&amp;D firms, is that correct?
That's correct. Kathy, feel free to weigh in.
Okay. One of the other things that would be helpful to the Town is when when a rental lease is executed, the property owner will notify the Building Commissioner of the following. And just the tenant's business name and contact information, the nature of the tenant's business, a list of chemicals processed or used by the tenant, a list of any bio-waste created, length of the rental lease, and the square footage leased. Does the petitioner have any objections to supplying that information at the time of the execution of lease?
The only thing I don't like submitting is the length of the lease. I don't have a problem with anything else.
Okay. And again, if the lease is... Well, how do we know how long they're gonna be there?
Well, if that information can stay confidential, I will happily give it to the Building Inspector, but I don't want it public information.
I'm sure the Build... Well, Amy can mention that. And then a couple of other things. I was assuming the building will be equipped with sprinklers, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
And is there a water source for any other fire?
There is, Madam Chair. We do have a cistern just outside the building. And it'll be taking the rooftop runoff to replenish it. And there is a some redundancy in that system as we have a non-plodable water supply well that will kick on and fill it should it need it.
Is that cistern noted on the drawings?
It is.
And where did you say it was, please?
It was to the north side of the building at the lower elevation of the loading docks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And one of the things I was hoping that the Fire Chief could supply to us.
Lynn?
Yes?
Lieutenant Polino of the Fire Department has joined. Do you want me to promote him?
Would you please? Lieutenant Polino.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good. We're just running over the plans for Ten Bigelow.
Yes.
The things that I thought would be of interest to you, and you can add or deduct from them, but they will have a sprinkler system in the building.
Okay.
There is a cistern that could be used for a water source for the Fire Department on the north side of the building by the loading dock. And do you think that there's a sufficient ability for an emergency vehicle to turn around in the parking area?
So the... What would be the capacity of the cistern that's been proposed?
Through the Chair, what was suggested by the Chief was a 30,000 gallon system in addition to the sprinkler system.
Okay, have we determined what the use of the building's going to be?
It will be an R&amp;D.
Research and development?
Correct.
Okay. What type of research?
That's unsure at this point. I'll defer to Kathy on those questions.
We don't know until we have a tenant.
Okay. The only reason I ask because the plans that were submitted to us had some... The first set of plans had research and development, but towards the end it had cannabis verbiage. So we were a little confused on the fireside what the end goal of this building was. The end goal will decide what the amount of water is gonna be needed. So that's what's gonna drive the water supply.
I appreciate the comment through the Chair. We did have it, as you know, filed initially as a cannabis cultivation facility. We withdrew the special permit application, site plan approval application without prejudice, and had since filed for the site plan approval. I think, Lieutenant, you're referring to... There was, I believe, a note on the plan that was a straggler from the cannabis facility, which has since been revised.
Yeah, I think it was like the last two pages.
Yeah, yeah, so it's R&amp;D at this point.
Okay, okay.
And just for your edification, Lieutenant Polino, I don't know if you were on, but we're going to ask the owner upon rental lease, when a rental or a lease is executed, for the tenant's business name and contact information, the nature of the tenant's business, a list of the chemicals processed or used by the tenant, a list of any bio-waste created, the length of the rental lease, which she would like to keep confidential and will go only to the Building Inspector, and the square footage leased.
Okay.
Now, do you have any trouble with the parking lot as far as emergency vehicle use?
I don't. I think the only issue that we had from the beginning was 360 access, but we had previously spoken with the owner owner and, I think, Wayne, and we had come to an agreement with making partial access off the rear side. So that was the only issue that was addressed, so... Yeah, as far as the parking lot, I don't see an issue.
Okay, is there anything that isn't on the plan that you agreed with them on? As far as the access, is that on the plan?
Off the top of my head, without seeing the plans in front of me. I mean, I haven't seen these plans since they were previously submitted a few months back.
They are... I'm sorry.
Nope, go ahead, Wayne.
Through the Chair, they are shown on the plans on the exhibits.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, do you have any comments to make?
I do, Madam Chair. So the the length of the lease cannot be held... Cannot be kept confidential. It would be a public record that would be submitted to the Building Department. And I see no problem with requiring the length of the lease as part of... as a condition.
Okay, do you have anything else, Amy?
Not right now. Once all of the... Once we come to a decision, I do have comments and a way to... A way to do that.
Do any of the other Board members or attendees have any comments they'd like to make? Any question?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if they're better addressed to Amy or to the Fire Chief. There are different levels of research and development according to the federal government standards. There is one through four, and they have different requirements for hazmat safety. We don't have anything in our bylaws that designate what can and can't be done in research and development. So would it be prudent to suggest that the type of research and development that is going to be happening in this building is limited to what the Fire Department is able to handle? In other words, BSL 1 through 4?
So they wouldn't... They would not... They would not be able to have a tenant that the Fire Department can't handle. So what we would... The way that we would condition it is the same way that I'm thinking how we would condition the water that Lieutenant Polino just spoke about, which is that any... Once a tenant is determined... And this would be through the site plan portion of the application, not the variance portion, because let's not forget, we do have two separate... We have three variances, and then we have site plan, and it's all before you guys. So with the site plan, we would require that the Fire Department sign off on the plan before the tenant it moves in. So that way, the water would be satisfactory and all of the all of the regulations. That being said, regardless of what the Town defines as research and development, any tenant has to comply with federal and state law. So all of the federal and state regulations will be followed by the tenant, no matter what.
Yes, I know that, but like, for example, if you look at... I mean, Level 1 is pretty basic. It's almost just office space. But if you look at Level 4, there... The pathogen type that could be in research and development are dangerous and exotic agents that pose a high risk of aerosol-transmitted laboratory infections and life-threatening disease. But that comes under research and development. Is that something that the Town is prepared that might possibly be in this building?
Mr. Hanks, the Building Commissioner is raising his hand, Lynn.
Please.
Would you like me to promote him?
Please do.
So as far as the use inside the building, that's all gonna be building code-driven and fire code-driven. So once a tenant is decided who's gonna be in there, what they're gonna do, they got to design the space according to the tenant, and they'll have to come through an engineer plans, architectural plans, that satisfy both building code and fire code for the use that's gonna be in there. So all these items get looked at at that point. So we'll be looking for the MSDA sheets. We've been looking for hazard materials. We're gonna look at, is the sprinkler system adequate for that and use that's gonna be in there? So I think a lot of stuff is gonna get picked up when it comes time for the actual tenant and what they're gonna be doing in there.
Okay, so would they... They would have to go through all those steps before they sign a lease, obviously, to get in the building?
Yeah, so typically... And I'm not sure how they plan on proceeding with this, but a lot of times they'll build the box, they'll build the shell. Once they establish a tenant, then the tenant's gonna come in for a permit to their space, and they're gonna identify what they're doing in there, and then they'll come up with full architectural engineered plans, and they'll show their suppression systems. They're gonna show all that means of egress. Anything that has to do with life safety and and building code-related items will come through on the tenant.
Okay, so if we vote on this to proceed, we're not writing a blank check here? There's still some checks and balances that will happen?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Okay, that satisfies my questions. Thank you.
Well, I think we've pretty well handled the building itself. What about the variances? Does anyone have any questions on the parking variances? Or Amy, do you have any comments on this whole idea of reserve?
No, I don't. As we discussed at our last meeting, the the applicant is okay with the reserved parking to be determined by the zoning... You know, it would be the Building Commissioner through the zoning or the zoning board through the Building Commissioner. And that, again, would be in both the variance decision and the site plan decision. We would put that reserve language in both.
So, excuse me, through the Chair, I know there was some question as to whether or not, in my understanding, through Amy's research, was that there wasn't a provision for reserve. So what we had done is, just for terminology, we've referred to it as phased parking. Phases 1, 2, and 3. Thank you.
Right, but we're treating it as reserved parking. So if the Board determines that Phase 2 is required, then that's gonna be required. And if the Board is determined that Phase 3 is required, that will be required.
Understood.
So it'll be like the language that I sent over, the example language I sent over.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I think we have a handle on the building and what provisions we're gonna require for the building. Amy, you wanna go through one at a time, the three variances that we're granting?
Yes, so so the first one that they've requested is from Sections 8, 10, and 811, which is the number of required parking spaces. And they are going from... They are... They're providing 371 total spaces with 164 spaces to be built. They're having 17 reserve in Phase 2 and 190 in Phase 3. The second is the requirement of site parking behind the building. This is... This is driven by the shape of the lot and the wetland. The wetlands on the lot. And then, again, also Section 831, they are... They're doing some parking within the setbacks, the required setbacks. And again, that is also driven by the shape of the lot and the wetlands. And that... I don't have the plan in front of me. The plan was up on the screen the last time, but I think it's... You can correct me if I'm wrong. I think some of that reserved park... Some of that parking that's in the setback is reserved parking, is Phase 2 and 3.
Through the Chair, some of Phase 1 is in there.
Right, but Phase 2 and most... Some of Phase 2 and 3 are also in there.
That's correct.
So the variance would be for all 300-plus parking spaces. So that is a little bit... We'll have to draft the decision carefully with regard to that. That some of these... So when they... So I guess what I'm trying to say is, when they go to build the reserved parking, we don't want them to have to come back because we are granting the variance now for them to build within the setback and for them to build in the back of the building. Or the front of the building, I'm sorry. Oh, you're on mute, Lynn.
So first of all, we have for the number of parking spaces and the reserve to meet the initial need.
Yep.
And then we have the parking within the setbacks. And the third one was the parking in front of the building or something, is that it, Amy?
Correct, because it's required to be behind the building, yes.
Right. And we determined that long ago, I think, when we were doing the cannabis one, that that's really off the road, you know, that's really... It's... If you look at Bigelow, it technically ends in Hudson, and the rest is like just part of that property, is it not, Mr. Bellick?
The majority of the property is located in Berlin with a small amount in Hudson.
So there is parking in Hudson?
There is no parking.
No.
There is no parking in Hudson, I'm sorry.
Right, but the road that goes in, the accepted road, Bigelow, ends at the town line. So therefore... Oh, it doesn't?
No. It ends about 300 feet short of the town line, from which point we pick it up with the access drive in Hudson that enters upon the Berlin property.
So it's a private road?
That would be a private way, that's correct.
And it's about 300 feet from where it's an accepted road in Hudson?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, do we have anything else, folks? Does anybody have any questions of us?
No.
Okay, Amy, how would you like to proceed? Would you like us to vote now, or would you like us to vote after?
So that is up to the Board. When we will be... You will... I will be requesting that you do two separate votes. The first vote would be for the variances, which can be... Those can be voted, you know, all the three of them, because the three prongs that have to be met are the same, because it's the same property. And then the second vote would be the site plan, which you know, I have jotted down in these hearings, I've jotted down notes with regard to conditions on the site plan. And so I didn't know if there were any other conditions that the Town would like to see on the site plan, on site plan review. For example, I didn't know if there were any landscaping conditions, anything like that, or if we're satisfied simply with the reference to the plan.
This property is not gonna be fenced in, is it?
That's correct.
Would you have any problem with leaving a 10-foot buffer around the exterior of the lot as screening? Natural screening?
Yeah, so currently, we have it loomed and seeded, and in a number of areas, there is a existing vegetation along that edge that will be undisturbed. So it'll be loomed and seeded.
It'll be loomed and seeded, but does anyone think it's necessary to require any kind of a screening?
Just based on the location here, I personally don't really see any advantage to screening. The only people that are gonna see this building are the... These folks that... Or the building in front of it, which is also owned by them. And whoever the tenant is. This isn't visible from any road that anybody else would typically travel down.
Okay, Amy, were there any other conditions you were looking at?
No, not that we've discussed. Again, the Conservation Commission will be, you know, issuing an order of conditions for this. So we would... We would have the... Any order of conditions would be incorporated into your site plan. What were we doing about about signage? We did discuss that briefly at the last meeting, I recall, but we don't know the signage because we don't know the tenants. Is that still the case?
That is the case.
Okay, so I guess the site plan would be...
Could we say that any signage would have to meet the requirements of the Town of Berlin?
Yep.
Unless otherwise, you know, they come back and ask for variants?
Correct. Yep. It's just unusual to have a site plan without the signage, where, you know, where the sign's located, et cetera.
And all the lighting is on there, right?
Excuse me, Madam Chair, we do have a location for the sign, site identification sign shown on the site plans as you enter the site. And it's located about eight feet or so into the property, into the Hudson portion of the property.
Now, does that meet the standards? Does that sign meet the standards?
At this point, we've referred to it as the site identification sign, and as suggested by you and Counsel, when they do come before you and they go to install the sign, it will meet the dimensional requirements.
Okay, so you have no problem with meeting the dimensional requirements?
No.
Okay. Anything else, Amy?
No. That's all I had jotted down in my notes.
And I don't hear anyone else having any concern? Okay. What do you folks wanna do? You wanna close the hearing, or do you wanna initiate a vote?
I'll make a motion that we approve the three variances based upon the unique location and wetlands involved that we approve a variance for 371 total parking figures that we permit them to be... To not be located behind the building and that we allow some of those parking spots to be located within the setback area.
Can I add to that, that it is pending the approval letter from Conservation Commission?
Conservation has given tentative agreement, saying Carolyn McDonald did their meeting right now, actually.
Yes, so we just wanna say it's once we get their final approval.
We can't condition a variance on another Board's approval, unfortunately. We can condition variances on, you know, things such as phasing or... Um, we can condition variances on, you know, things such as, um, phasing or, time, you know, time of operation or something like that, but, uh, we really can't condition it on another board. So the applicant is taking the risk right now. If the other board, meaning the Conservation Commission, requires them to change their project because of the wetlands, they would have to come back to you.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion with the conditions stated by Amy and stated by us earlier to approve the three variances for parking. Is there a second? Okay, Denny's a second. Um, any further discussion on the variances? I expected to see Kathy smiling, but she's not.
That's a smile, Madam Chair.
All right. I'll do, I'll do a, um, a roll call vote. Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Uh, Keith?
Hi.
And I'm an I. So, um, we have three variances with the conditions so stated. The next is, um, the site plan approval. Does someone care to make a motion? What's the date of the latest, what's the date of the latest, um, set of plans?
Madam Chair, it's, uh, five twenty-nine, uh, twenty twenty-three.
And does that include the change you made about taking off the cannabis?
That's correct.
Okay, so we, I'll entertain a motion to approve the site plan. Um, and it, this is by L B C, dated five twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
You're moved.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Jenny. Any further discussion? If not, we'll do a roll call. Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Oh, I expected you, your smile to get brought a Kathy.
Looks like she's lifting weights.
That, that's with the conditions that we talked about, about trashing removal and, um, to tenants and, um, the list of things that would be, um, given each time the tenant changes. It's been a long haul, Kathy, but you made it.
There's a long way to go, but we're getting there.
Okay, is there anything else about this hearing before we close it?
So, Madam Chair, I will, um, I will draft a decision and then I will get it over to you and Leanne. Does that make the best sen- does that make the most sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, is that something typically you provide the applicant, uh, an opportunity to look at it as well, or is that?
Only, only if you don't close the hearing, which they're going to close the hearing, so.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, we promise it won't have any surprises, okay?
Good, thank you.
Okay, um, I think, um, we're all set to close the hearing if someone wants to make a motion.
Move to the close.
Is there a second, please?
Second. Is that? What's that? Who made the second?
Susanna.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Jim?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Danny?
Hi.
Jenny, and I'm an I. We're going to miss meeting with you folks.
Same here, Madam Chair. It's been a while, but it's been, uh, it's been enjoyable. It's been good, been good.
Okay, I'll ask Amy to stay on if she would. And, um, I just have a question, um, of the building inspector, and this is about two seventy-five, um, about the mobile station on Central Street.
Wait, did we vote to close the meeting, the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you very much.
Yeah, good night, folks.
Bye.
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 Um, Rich, are you still there?
I am here.
Yeah, you short timer, you.
Well, that, 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 that might have changed today, but we'll, we'll get into that later.
Oh, well, that's a good piece of news.
Yeah.
I, well, because you were a short timer, I just wanted to make sure, while Amy was with us, that you understood the process you're going through with the mobile station.
So, Madam Chair, that is, um, that actually, that case is being transferred to new council.
Oh, it is?
It is.
Oh, dear. Okay, um, all right, well, i- if this promise that you're not going to leave us as soon as you thought, Rich, then.
Uh, I, I, I will be around for a while.
Excellent, okay. All right, it's what, like, tw- um, seven forty-one? And we also have a, another hearing, um, about the Hurst House. Are the petitioners in the audience, Leanne?
They are.
So, Madam Chair, I'm going to hop off. I will get that draft decision to you guys for your comment.
Thank you so much, Amy. We're going to miss you.
I know, thanks. I'll miss you guys. You're always my favorite Z B A. I'll miss you guys, but we'll see each other.
I miss you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Amy.
All right, bye.
Thanks, Amy.
Yep.
Hmm, all right, Lynn, I'm promoting the next, for the next hearing. Lynn, I did want to let you know that, um, the newspaper advertisement and the butter notification was verified, um, by me on Monday.
Thank you. Hi, folks. Well, I'll declare the hearing for, um, the Hurst House, um, on Central Street open. And is there anything that any of the petitioners, uh, either Mary or, um, Bob would like to, uh, explain to us what they're doing here?
Uh, I can give you a brief explanation, Bob, is that okay?
Sure.
Bob did all the paperwork, because my brain kind of folded over. Um, basically, in, um, in twenty thirteen, we, the Art and Historical Society hired a building reconstruction es- expert to repair the Hurst House, which is an eighteen oh five building, um, the oldest municipal building in the town of Berlin. And, uh, the project got started, he disassembled the building, took it off the old burial ground, brought it back to his shop in, um, Western Mass, and kind of, the project kind of fell apart. Uh, like most organizations in town, I think the Art and Historical Society had a very few people who were doing too many things. And so in, uh, twenty nineteen, in December, the society voted Bob, myself, and Rebecca Van Geldern, as well as Dave Westernling, to be a Hurst House Building Committee to focus just on getting this little antique building reassembled. So we've been working with the historical preservationist. We had talked to the building inspector, he said, yep, the building's under two hundred square feet, you do not need a, um, building permit. The Cemetery Commission gave us permission, the Select Board gave us permission. And then, um, I was sending something to the building inspector and he said, oh, by the way, you need to meet setbacks. And I said, oh, no, we don't. We have this letter from nineteen seventy-two, um, which was, you know, a variance that Town Council had provided at the time. And Mr. Hanks basically replied, yeah, but because the building hasn't been there for a couple of years, you lose your grandfather. So, um, the, the Cemetery Commission is very specific about, they want the building to go back to the place where it was, because other than that, we don't really know if there's people buried, even though there's, you know, not markers in certain parts of the cemetery. Um, the, the proposed site is only five feet from the neighbor on the property, and so that's why we're here in front of the Z B A to look for a variance to put this eighteen oh five building back in the same place that it was since the seventies. Um, longer story, it was built in eighteen oh five, it was on Woodward Ave. In eighteen sixteen, it was moved to the old burying ground, but it was right on the road, a, a piece of the road that's now sidewalk. In nineteen seventy-three, the town sold it to what was recently the Gill Property. Um, I mean, sorry, in nineteen twenty-six and seventy-three, the Art and Historical Society bought it back, put it in the old burying ground at the location that we are proposing to reassemble it, which again is the variance that we're looking for, because it is only five feet setback from the side. Is that, um, enough information for you all, or does anyone have any questions?
We've had a very good history lesson. Does anyone else have any question?
I, um, yes, I have one. I assume the owner of the property that is only five feet next to the building ha- is not objecting to this.
We have not been told that that person is objecting. I believe currently the building is, uh, the home is owned by J. Tesh, and it is a leased property. Um, Bob sent out all the letters to the Butters and we did not hear from anybody regarding the property.
Leanne, we haven't heard from anyone. I haven't heard any objection. So we have received, you know, this, and there's no one in the audience with the hand raised or anything, is there?
Nope, the only one left in the audience is Select Board member Christine Keith.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
When we, when we say it's, excuse me, when we say it's five feet from the next door property, we're talking about the wall, not the actual building next door. The building next door is much closer to the street, the Hurst House, if you looked at it, would be back, further back from the street than the house is, so it's not literally rising up right next to the wall of the house. It's back behind the house.
Well.
And below it.
The setback deals with the distance from the lot line.
Correct.
And again, we're talking about, um, uh, the usage for the property. We're hoping to make it kind of a little mini museum, open five, six times a year when there's other activities in town, Memorial Day, Veterans Day, um, holidays in Berlin, um, maybe Halloween, if we can do something spooky and cute. You know, there will not be electricity in the building, we'll use some solar powered generated light and/or heat if we need to in the short term, um, you know, when, in the period of time that it's opened. The Historical Society is really hoping to get, you know, people excited about history in Berlin again and get some young people involved, and, you know, we're hoping to go out to the schools and be able to have them come look at, at the Hurst House.
I have to admit, I think it sounds exciting that it's coming back. And, uh, I, probably, I hope it's not a stupid question, but is there actual, um, original material?
Yes, the frame, uh, a great amount of timbers in the frame are from eighteen oh five. And it's a scribe building, so it's kind of even before post and beam. So li- literally, this was some townspeople that threw the building up and, you know, some of the beams might be seven by seven, some might be eight by eight. So the restoration carpenter has used like epoxy to repair the cracks. We have to do a whole new flooring, the flooring rotted. Um, and so the frame itself will be primarily from eighteen oh five. Uh, we're going to see how much of the sheathing, the boards we can use, um, on the siding and the roof. We will have new pine siding, um, we're going to do cedar shingles, um, for the roofing. So, you know, this will effectively be a cute little shed. It's twelve by sixteen, um, that, you know, will be set back from the road and, um, yes, so yes, there is still a lot of original eighteen oh five boards being used.
Well, and I think it's great.
This is just a variance for the side lot requirement. And again, some of the reasons that we need to find, um, again, it's a replacement, it was there before. Uh, you're concerned about unmarked graves?
Yes.
Um, and putting it in any other position, uh, could possibly put it on top of an unmarked grave, is that correct?
That is correct.
Um, and it is, there is one question that was raised, and that was, who actually owns that cemetery?
The cemetery is owned by the town. The building currently is owned by the Art and Historical Society. We have an agreement with the town, with the Select Board and the town manager, that when we are completely finished assembling it, um, we will transfer ownership to the town, but the society will maintain it. We will do maintenance on it for twenty-five years, so the town won't have to take on additional costs to keep it, you know, painted and updated and that sort of thing. But the town will actually take ownership of it, once it's completely put back together again.
Leanne, I'm going to ask if you would, um, promote Chris Keith. I have a question for her. Hi, Chris.
Hi.
Um, one of the concerns that was raised to me was that no one signed the petition uh, as the property owner. But now this came before the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes, it did.
And you guys voted to have them put it back where it was, correct?
Yes, I think Mary's correct in what she, um, said to you all about, um, the agreement between the Select Board and this, the group for the Hurst House.
Would you have, um, any, who's chair of the, um, Select Board right now?
I am.
Well, good. Would, would you have either yourself? Would it be okay for either you or yourself or, um, Kristen to sign the original petition?
Um, yes, I can talk to her about that.
Okay, Leanne, would that be okay with you, that, um, they could sign the original petition?
Well, it's filed with the clerk.
Right, right, but I mean, we need to have a signature on us, too.
Okay.
Okay.
So, could you do that for us?
Sure.
Thank you, Chris.
Mm-hmm.
June, did you have your hand up? You're on mute, so you're going to have to unmute yourself.
You're still muted, June.
There we go.
Okay, I did look at the petition, uh, before the meeting tonight, and Kristen did sign as a representative. She, she and, um, Bob Blair and Mary Reddington are, well, she didn't, let's see, she is listed as an applicant representative.
Right, but if you go to page two.
Right, it's, it's, it's Rob, it's Bob Blair that signed, that's right.
Right, but we need the signature of the property owner, so that would either be, um, Chris or Ann, um, Kristen, the, the town administrator would have to sign. That's what I'm looking for, okay?
Okay.
And I know that the Select Board was in favor of it, I don't think there's any prob- And I know that the select board was in favor of it, I don't think there's any problem. But there was a question raised to me as to who owns that property, does the Historical Society own it or? You know, who's the owner? And I think it would be more comforting to me if someone would sign the petition on behalf of the. Uh, town. Does anyone else have any other questions? So I have as my points of information here. Um, that you're concerned about locating it anywhere else, it had been located there. But had been under restoration. Um, and it would be a hardship not to be able to relocate it after you've gone. To the time and expense of having it restored. Does anyone have anything else? If not, uh. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the uh, application. Uh, due to the limitations of the site. And being that uh. There doesn't appear to be any objections from any of the abutters.
Is there a second, please?
I will second.
Thank you, Jenny. Uh, any further discussion? If not, I'll take a roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Dennis.
Aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And um, Susanna.
Aye.
And I'm an I. So, um, to the folks from the Historical Society. We've granted this, it has to go to the town clerk. Well, first of all, I have to write the decision. I'm old and I'm slow. But Mr. Hanks is on the line, so he knows that, you know, you have our permission. You do run the jeopardy, it has to be filed after we, well, I write it. The folks sign it. Then it has to go to the town clerk for twenty days if anyone wishes to appeal it. After the twenty day appeal period is over. Um, it is cast in stone. So, um, you know, it's up to you if you wanna go ahead, or if you wanna wait until after you. Make sure no one, you know, um, appeals it. Uh, that's the process.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, we are, we are moving at the speed of Berlin, so. My guess is the society will opt to wait the twenty days since it's been ten years. In the making and the little eighteen oh five building will bring itself back to Berlin, you know, twenty days hence.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Then we, we need a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion, if not. Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Danny.
Uh.
Jenny.
Aye.
Keith.
Aye.
And Susanna.
Aye.
And I'm an I. Thank you, folks, okay, um. We have a couple of things, yes, Jim?
No, just waving goodbye to the folks, we're leaving.
Oh, okay. All right, what's next on the agenda, Leanne?
Reorganization of the board.
Oh, yeah, okay, so Leanne's gonna take over chairmanship.
I am.
No, I thought I had to.
Yeah, Suzanne is the associate.
Oh, Susanna, if you volunteer, fine.
Well, you asked me to.
Boy, the memory's going too. All right, Susanna, if you would take over chairmanship and call for. Nominations for the three different um. Positions.
Uh, what is that, clerk, vice chair and chair?
Correct.
Okay, so do I, I'm calling for nominations in seconds and then a vote?
Correct. You'll, you'll, someone will say I nominate and um. Have it seconded and then you ask if there are any other. Uh, nominations. And if not, you can call for a vote.
Okey dokey.
Can I nominate?
Uh, do I have to open the?
Oh, you, you just say you'll, you'll be accepting nominations and then whatever position you're talking about.
Okay, all right, we will start with the ZBA chair, I am accepting nominations for the ZBA chair. For how many years?
If this is annual.
Annual, okay.
I nominate Lynn.
This is for FY twenty-four.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, are there any other nominations? All right, not hearing any, let's do a vote, Pat?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Uh, Lynn?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Jim?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I'm an I. Congratulations.
You folks are gluttons for punishments, all right, um. I'll entertain motions for uh, the position of vice chair.
Hey, I nominate Jim Roy.
Is there a second, please?
I will, I will second.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Um, let's see, Jim, I'll skip you, do you wanna abstain?
Yep.
Uh, Pat?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And Susanna?
Aye.
And I'm an I, we have a vice chair for FY twenty-four. Uh, okay, um, I'll entertain nominations for ZBA clerk for FY twenty-four.
Okay, nominate Dennis Bartlett.
Is there a second, please?
I'll second.
That was Jenny, okay. Are there any other nominations for clerk? If not, I'll take a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
And Danny, I'm assuming you'll abstain.
Correct.
And I'm an I. So we have a clerk for FY twenty-four. Okay, next, do we have minutes, Leanne?
We do, but I added to the agenda per Susanna's request, a discussion on research and development definition. To propose for the bylaws.
Yeah, I just, I need feedback. It's really complicated. No. I mean, I, I didn't hear anything back from Tim Wheeler, I sent him the same information that I sent to you, Lynn. Regarding it. Um. As you heard earlier, there's four levels of um. Safety and then there's also uh, a separate. Set of four, four levels for animal testing. And, yeah, yeah, so do we wanna allow that, um? So we just need something to define what is allowed and what isn't allowed. What we have, uh, where's my email? Um. In our table of principal use, we have research and development offices or establishments. And under. It's under commercial uses, we have um. Yes, restrictions, or I forget what R stands for. And limited business and limited industrial. And then separately, we have research laboratories in manufacturing enterprises, which are allowed as a special permit. No, site plan review. I'm terrible, I don't know what these initials stand for. And that is only allowed in the limited industrial, so we have limited business and limited industrial. And two different types of research and development, we have offices or establishments. And we also have uh, laboratories in manufacturing. So, do we want definitions for both of those two separately? Well, I shouldn't say both of those two, do we want two separate definitions? For research and development, or do we want just one? For research and development, and do we wanna restrict it to limit what levels of? Um, biosafety that we have?
Wow, um.
Go ahead.
Well, now. I'm confused too, because we didn't. Because definition is so open as we have it. They, what we just passed to is totally. There's basically no conditions on it, correct?
Well, that's what I was trying to ask earlier with um, Amy saying, can we say what level of biosafety? We can go in there and Richard was saying that it has to go through his approval first. Before somebody goes in. But again, it still doesn't limit it to what level of uh, biosafety, just that they have to follow the, the guidelines.
But it, to get approved, just as an example. Northeastern University has been trying to get a level four bio lab. Approved in Boston. And they've been trying to do that for fifteen years. To try to get it through the state. And you have to get all kinds of federal certifications and state certifications and. There's a whole laundry list of things that go with that. That. If somebody tried to bring a level four la- biohazard lab into Berlin. They'd have to go through all those same processes.
Okay, so. Knowing that, do we want to? Say anything about? Limiting it, it doesn't even get to that level?
Well, one of the things that I would be interested in seeing, Susanna, is. It's allowed in more than one district, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's it, the way the definition is, can go there or, yeah.
Well, I don't. I don't know if we would want a three or a four in a commercial district.
Yeah.
I can see, you know, so we may need to take a look at. What level is allowed in what district? Um, I, I would be concerned about having. A level three or four R and D in a commercial district, does anyone have anything else that they're concerned about?
This is totally, I, I'm making myself more confused as we talk here. But like even in Southborough, the Primate Center from Harvard. Would that have gone through all the federal and the state before they went in there?
Yes.
Okay, but still. Uh, yeah.
Yeah, e- exactly, I mean, I, I feel like this is outside of our expertise, I have. Uh, uh, in a prior life, worked for the Atomic Energy Authority, there's so much that has to go through. Um, state approval, when you get to that level of materials. That, um, it's not like it's gonna just be put in, in secret, it's gonna, you, you need approval, evacuation approval from. Fire and police and, and I assume the town, but definitely the state, so. I think that's what um, Richard was alluding to, is that there's so many checks and balances before we get to that point that. Um, you know, there's really no need for us to worry about. Micro. Detailing that, that's. Just wide net of unknowns in a bylaw. And I sort of agree with that, I mean, I think. You know, they're not gonna, uh, no one's gonna put in extreme hazardous material. In the secret, um.
Okay, well, this is good, because these are the things that I didn't know and I couldn't even, I didn't know even how to start making a definition. Because I didn't know how these things work, so thank you.
Well, I guess my question would be, if somebody. Wanted to bring, say, for example, a level four. Biohazard lab to the town of Berlin, if they'd managed to get federal and state permits. Is our zoning bylaw really gonna stop them no matter what it says?
Good point.
Yeah.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna, you know, basically.
Yeah, we're gonna be the little bugs. Yeah.
But my experience is it doesn't. They don't really do it that way, I mean, they want the community to embrace it, um, you know, I, there's. I mean, right near the Burlington Mall, there's level four iridium and cobalt that, you know, it happens. Every day they're encapsulating thousands of curries and people don't know it exists and it's, it's right there, but there's evacuation and. You know, all sorts of emergency protocol. Um, because it's so next to. Um, you know, all of, all of that other commercial. I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't think people are gonna try to sneak it in and we're gonna find it out later, um, if that's what our concern is.
Okay, so then, uh, then all we have to do really is. Define research and development offices or establishments. And differentiate it from research. Laboratories and manufacturing enterprises. And the only reason we need to define those two is because one is allowed in limited business. And the other one is allowed in limited industrial.
Where is that defined, say that again?
In the, um, if they're, they're not defined, we need to define them. So if somebody comes in and wants to say, do research and development on uh, drones. We need to know if that falls under manufacturing enterprises. Or uh, research and development offices or establishments, because. In offices or establishments, it's allowed in limited business and limited industrial. But if we consider it to be manufacturing enterprise. Then it's only allowed in limited industrial. So we just need to know. We just need better definitions rather than just having five words in our table of um, principal use.
Would we?
Susanna, could you break it out, there, there's four different levels, right?
Well, we don't, apparently we don't have to worry about the four different levels now, cause that's federal.
Well, only as it may apply to where they're placed.
Okay.
I mean, we, there may or may not be something that you would want in a limited business that you wouldn't mind having in a limited industrial.
Right, but they don't break down the same way, because um, for example, the one of the iridium and cobalt. If they are, if they are just, um. And they are, are more office-like. Where they deal with it occasionally. Versus a labor- laboratory where they're. Um, dealing with it every day or they're manufacturing it. That, so it could be level four in either of those two conditions.
Right, and I don't know, let's say you're doing research. On uh, health insurance. Uh, that could be considered R and D.
Yes.
And that would be something that is very benign.
Yes.
It's probably all with computers.
Yes, that's why we need definitions, right?
Anyone have any suggestions?
Well, the only way we'll be able to actually research it would be. Calling other towns and seeing how they handle it, right? I don't know how else would.
Yeah. I have, I mean, I have, I did download some. From uh, the state green communities designation and grant programs, they have a definition. And uh, from cyberbia dot org, which is for urban planning on. Online forum, they have some definitions also. I guess what I can do is just come up with some draft definitions. And maybe that will help get me some better feedback from you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, let's put it on the agenda for next month, and do you think that's reasonable for you to come back with some draft? Or do you wanna wait till September or?
No, 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 it, I'd rather, I'd rather do it and get it done rather than have it, you know, string along and me forget what I said two months ago.
Anyone object to us putting this on the agenda for next month?
No, thank you very much for doing it, yeah.
No, the only thing I would caught, your comment is that, you know, we need to keep in mind that R and D doesn't necessarily mean. A biohazard or a chemical hazard or whatever, you know, it could be. You know, somebody could be researching internet protocols. You know, there's. You know, there's, yeah, all the high-tech businesses all do research and development. You know, Goodyear does research and development on tire designs, you know, they they're not necessarily messing with any chemicals, they're doing it, like you said, in CAD or in a lot of cases, R and D, I worked R and D on Hanscom Air Force Base, and it was strictly financial. You know, we just paid the bills for R and D, but we were part of R and D.
But that would be the difference between office or industrial and lab, I don't think you're gonna be an industrial lab and only dealing with computers.
Well, I agree, but they, well, but they, they may say they're, what they have is a lab, but a computer lab isn't a chemical lab or a biohazard lab.
Sure.
So it's, it's a different situation there, so I, I just want to caution that we can't necessarily assume everything is a bio, is life sciences and chemicals, it's.
No, I understand that, that's why I gave, you know, researching drone as, as an example, because that's just electronics, which is another big research and development thing that doesn't have any of it. But it's a gray area, whether it's considered an office establishment or a manufacturing establishment. And that's where it's hard for us to tell whether it would be allowed in limited business or limited industrial, that's all.
It'd be great to see what other towns, surrounding towns, how they handle it.
Would you like to do that, Keith?
I have no idea how I would go about doing that.
Look at their bylaws online.
I can attempt to do that, I won't, I won't promise.
Okay. Because I'm sure Susanna would appreciate any.
Oh, I have to work with Susanna? No, no, I can't do that, I'm sorry.
You guys are a bunch of cards. I, I did get a kick tonight about Amy saying that, you know, she's gonna miss us because we're the best ZBA she works with, I thought that was interesting and a and sort of a feather in the, I'm sorry?
Amy.
Yeah.
Do we want to close the official meetings and?
Well, we still have minutes.
Oh, right.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the meeting? No, we have to vote on minutes, okay, make a motion to vote on the minutes from the meeting, June 14th.
Okay.
Any further discussion? If not, Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Danny?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
And Susanna?
Aye.
Now, before we go, I need to provide some guidance as to who's signing what. Leanne, did everyone come in and fill out their forms?
Yes, so everyone was eligible to vote tonight.
Okay, excellent, okay. All right, if there is nothing else that we, oh, I just wanted to mention that I attended the planning board meeting last night. And they're working on the sign ordinance. Particularly LED. And the gist of it is, they had a long involved thing about, you know, um, I know JT should written up, that was very helpful. But I think where they're coming down is that they will allow LED signs for municipal use only. And they're gonna limit it to two, one for the school and one for the town. So, um, that's where they stand right now, if anyone's interesting, their meeting August 8th. And they do Zoom. That was, you know, they went on quite a bit about the sign and the LED and Carolyn is very good, she's done some research on the looms and all of that sort of stuff. So I think she is anti-LED. But I think she's willing to go along with it if it's the town. You know, if the, if the, like down at the school or whatever.
Well, I'll be helping at the front door and go in the back door.
Well, one of the things I proposed to them is, if they're talking about a town sign, who can approve it? Is it the Board of, Board of, the Select Board? I mean, who approves it for the town? Or for the school, for that matter? So, that's something I don't think they've kind of worked out. Who is the town? To me, it's the Select Board, but we'll see what they come up with. Okay, before Jenny falls asleep, I'll entertain a motion, we don't have anything else, do we, Leanne? Oh, who's available for next month?
I have something before we go too far.
Oh.
Should we do Suzanne, that problem we had, looked at from Hudson, should we?
Yes, yeah, I forgot about that.
At the meeting, or after the meeting?
It was after the meeting.
After the meeting, okay.
I'm moving to close this meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Aye.
Could I just ask for availability before we vote? Who's available for our next meeting?
I am, Lynn, I think so.
Pat, and, okay, and Jim, Danny? Susanna?
Uh, what, would you say August 8th, 9th, something?
No, no, 8th was the, um.
It would be August 9th.
August 9th, okay, yes, I'm available.
Okay, and what about you, Keith?
Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, so everybody seems to be available for the August 9th meeting. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on closing the meeting, if not, Jim?
Aye.
Pat?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Susanna?
Aye.
Okay, I'll declare the meeting closed.